Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Madam President.
We'll get started with our council meeting. I'd just like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrates position. Also, please be advised our city council meeting is being broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. Meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. Chair calls on Assistant City Clerk Jennifer Smith for the role call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
And Back?
Here.
Councilmen Cannon, Wilson, and Reed are absent today. We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we're grateful for how you love us, God, and we're grateful to live in Gaston, Alabama. Father, we just ask that you'll be with those that aren't here today. We ask you to be with those families that are struggling, Father, with either the COVID disease or other things that are going on in their lives. Father, we ask you to work with them and love and give them grace and mercy as only you can do. We ask you, God, for guidance today as we make decisions on behalf of the city and the taxpayers of Gaston. Father, we give you all the glory and all the honor. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I don't believe I see Mrs. Gaither here from EMA and that maybe because we have a storm that's raging on our coastal areas and when there's a storm, EMA is always going into alert. So we'll look for maybe an update from her. I don't know how much changes that there have been with the COVID, but all I know is it's still raging and we still need to be careful as far as, and careful and cautious as far as the COVID-19 is concerned. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on September the 8th.
So moved. Second?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of account for the week of September the 4th through the 10th.
So moved. Second?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
I finished business. We have an ordinance amending the city code pertaining to non-full-time employees, and this ordinance was passed, was presented last week for first reading. It amends city code section 102-3B4 to define the number of hours worked in order to be classified as a non-full-time employee. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2021 budgets. This ordinance approves the following budget. The general fund budget, our general fund is $51,405,295. The special revenue fund is $99,142,961. The debt service fund is $7,319,818. The enterprise and internal service fund is $12,057,854. The capital project fund is $7,600,000. The capital project fund two is $6,661,400. Is there anyone who would like to speak in regards to the budget? Ms. Ross?
While she's coming, Madam President, I think you said $51,000, but you meant to say $51 million.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what you was gonna correct me on, Ms. Ross.
No, ma'am, I was not, but we wouldn't survive very long on $51,000.
All right.
So I would like to present the fiscal year 2021 budget this morning. There again, we have met with every council member, and as far as I know, there are no issues, which we're very thankful for. This budget has projected revenues of $51,205,295. That is a decrease, notice I use the word decrease, in budget of $1,359,35 from last fiscal year. Councilman Back has said on a number of occasions that he was surprisingly pleased with the amount that we had a decrease in budget. And that's, that's, that's a hard thing to say you've got a decrease in your budget, but with the COVID year that we've had, we are very, very fortunate to only have decreased this budget by a little over $1.3 million. I have told all of y'all that my projections for revenues are normally very conservative, probably not as conservative this year as in normal years. So if projected revenues do not come in at where we have them, then we know that we'll all go back to the table and we'll have to make some adjustments during next fiscal year. Of the projected revenue number, we have decreased, the main places we have had a decrease is in occupational. We have went from $15.7 to $14.5 million. There again, we know with the loss of Goodyear, that's, that's a true number, okay? We're not going to be getting occupational tax from Goodyear, so, so we can pretty much justify that. Also recreational income, we have decreased from $2.3 million to $2 million even. There again, our recreational has been down significantly this year, but a lot of that is due to the, the closure of a lot of our facilities, one of the main closures being the venue, which has continued to be closed at this time. So those numbers are coming up, they're coming up gradually. We have level funded sales and use tax. There again, we've not seen a very significant impact on our sales and use during the past six months through COVID. I think a lot of that is because of online sales and then also we've talked about the stimulus funding and also the unemployment checks that, funding that people have been receiving. So there again, we, we hope we're on target. Our total expenditures are $51,405,295, so there's a difference of $200,000, and that $200,000 difference is being taken from our undesigned fund balance. And again, I feel like we're, we're very blessed to only be having to take $200,000 from our reserves to balance the budget. Our personnel cost is down significantly, and we've talked about those in meetings, what those decreases are. In this budget for personnel, we have discussed, there are no raises in this budget for any city employee. When you're operating in a deficit, you really can't even put that on the table talking about a raise. So there are no raises in this budget. However, we did do a couple of things. We, we changed tier two employees to tier one benefits, okay? So we've, we have already approved that. We still have not received notification from the RSA board that we have been approved, but I'm assuming we will be. There again, that cost was about a $255,000 impact on us this, this next fiscal year. The other thing that we did is health insurance. As always, our health insurance, of course, again, is going up. We've budgeted a 7% increase and it's going up 5.5%. We know that we have an ordinance out there that says that the city takes on 80% of that cost and employ 20% of that cost, but because of there being no raises in this budget, the City of Gaston is going to absorb 100% of that increase for fiscal year 2021. So what I pay right now for my health insurance is exactly what I will pay next fiscal year. There will be no increase to employees on health insurance costs. That to the city was about a $350,000 cost. Our operating was down $68,638. There again, one of the biggest things there was the Humane Society contract that was negotiated and is down $52,000 from last year, and y'all have already approved that contract. The capital is down $96,017. Most of that is because of new software that we had for the building department and planning departments this past year that's been paid for. Transfers are down $189,557, and those are down mostly because of the golf course. I know Councilman Worthy is a golfer and he's had good comments as, we've had many, many good comments about the golf course and the investment that we've made there in the greens and Chad feels like the rounds will be up. They are already up. The numbers for this month are going to look really good. So we feel like, you know, that, so there was a decrease there significantly. Outside agencies is down $86,500. There again, we've discussed this, there were seven new funding requests this fiscal year. We did not fund any new agencies, but we did level fund all current agencies that were in last year's budgets, that remained in this budget. So outside agencies are whatever they received last year, they're going to receive this year. There were a few that we did take out, one of those being Manna, but we've talked about it. We're not cutting Manna out. Manna is getting money from COVID HUD funds in the amount of $30,000, and they were getting 16 from general fund money, so they're actually getting an additional $14,000, which I know is good for that agency. Looking at the capital improvement funds, we have two. These are our major projects where we do capital improvements. Capital project fund number one has a budget of $7.6 million. A million of that is for street improvements, $50,000 for strapping, $500,000 for drainage improvements, $331,715 for major building improvements, $1,095,000 for equipment, and we talked about that, that mostly is for six equipped patrol cars, a new garbage truck, and a new loader truck. And as Ben Reed said, there are no trucks, pickup trucks in this budget, are there? And no, there are not. There are no pickup, new pickup trucks, okay? So this is for major equipment that is basically needed. The rest of this budget is 4.6, a little over $4.6 million, which is debt, and we all know that most of our debt payments come from this, from this capital project one fund. Capital projects two has a budget of $6,661,400. $800,000 is for street improvements, and we talked about this, between the million in fund 320, 800 in fund 340, you've got $750,000 in gas tax. So you've got about $2.5 million for street resurfacing next year, not including the $500,000 of HUD funds that's budgeted. So all in all, there's a little over $3 million for street improvement projects next year, which is a significant number. We also have $50,000 here from Miranda Park, a thousand, a million, a thousand, a million for industrial development, and we've discussed that in length, a million five for a new fire station that will be to replace the fire station number seven that's in Alabama City near the steel plant. That fire station will be built at Banks Park, and so I know they're excited about that. A million five is also for the complex at, at Gaston State, a million 396,400 for debt, and 415 for the outside agency funding for the IDA. And that is basically it in a nutshell. We will ask for approval, hopefully unanimous consent of this approval of this budget next week. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Don't steal my one.
Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Okay. I know we absorbing the insurance, that was about 300,000. So if we would've gave a one-step raise, how much that would've been?
Almost half a million dollars.
Okay. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, before you step down, can you, can you give the percentage of personnel cost at this point? Are you prepared to?
Deborah, I cannot, I did not do that, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
But it's down.
But we're below 70% now.
We would have to be, yes, yes. I did not calculate that. That it? Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions from council members?
One, one thing that Lisa didn't say is that there were no layoffs in this budget, and I think that's, that's important. Anytime any employer, including the city, is willing to, to retain its core workforce is a, is a step, is a testament to its commitment. So, so I think that, that shouldn't go overlooked. This would've been a perfect opportunity for any employer to take that opportunity, and they didn't. So I think that's, that should be highlighted.
And the other thing I'd just like to say is that it's good for benefits. I, I think a lot of employees, the younger employees don't appreciate benefits until they get my age, and so benefits are, are really a key and they're very, very important. So we appreciate, and, and I'm glad that the city can, they can't get, they don't get a raise, but having insurance is very important. So because the city is willing to do that, that's a good thing too. So I just want to say we appreciate our finance director for being a, I call her a watch, I won't say, I, I call her a watchman for the money of the city, and making sure that we do the right thing as far as persons that are responsible for legislation. Mayor?
I want to congratulate her too, even though I call her doctor, no, she knows I'm only kidding. She knows what she's doing, trust me, and we appreciate her. Thanks.
Our final public hearing is a resolution authorizing annulment of a portion of an alley located off Dartmouth Street in District Two as a request by the adjacent property owners. All utility companies have been notified and are allowed to, by state law, to maintain any utility facility located in the alley. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution creating and amending job classifications. This adds the job classification of transit driver at pay range three. It amends the job title director of risk management to risk manager at pay rate range 14, and it changes the job classification of payroll coordinator from pay range 12 to 14. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Rafa House, and this is for 10-bed units for city prisoners to participate in the treatment program in the amount of $20,000 per year. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second?
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is to authorize lease agreement with Slacky Big Chief Drive-In LLC for the restaurant space at 210 at the track, and this is for one-year term beginning October 1, 2020, and the amount is $2,500 per month. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second?
Is there any question? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. As for unanimous consent, it's a resolution authorizing a second amendment to contract an agreement between the City of Gaston, the Edgewall County Commission, and the Sheriff of Edgewall County.
Second?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move for adoption, please.
Second?
Is there any discussion?
This is a contract between, between all the parties for us to house these prisoners at the county jail.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I didn't ask, is this just a one-year contract?
Yes.
Okay.
And we need to start thinking about where a jail.
I agree.
A home jail.
I know, I know, I know Chief not here, but I know he won't agree, but two people up here agree. Maybe two down there don't agree.
Lisa agrees, so that's all that matters.
She's not, she's not all the way there. She's waiting on the data.
She's already got the data.
Our opposition is not here. As Councilman Reed, he's not here.
I don't know. He may be changing his mind.
Department reports? Have any department reports? No department reports. He's gone, I was going, my superintendent's gone. We have some citizen requests. Is, and I, is Brandon Hall here? James Parker? Mario Richardson Ray? Ben Payne?
Who putting him on here? And they not showing it?
At this, at this time, we'll have comments from the council. Mayor, Mayor, you have any comments?
Turn your mic on. Sorry, today is... I think today on school, I start doing the aftercare or parsing rec at the different centers. We'll be keeping kids, it may, it may not be today, but it's starting pretty soon. I don't know exactly the date. 28th, okay. There will be some information sent home to the parents. It'll be marked off in certain spaces. They will test their temperature when they come in the door. If it's too high, the parents will have to come get them. So there'll be a lot of things going on, but the Board of Education has got all the information. We send it to the chairman of the board.
Councilman Worthy?
Okay, let me read this. I just got an email from, not email, but a text from Deborah Gaither. The deaths in Edgewall County is at 43, and we have 2,911 positive cases, and they have not shared the latest on the new 14-day total for us yet. So total tested as of this time, 24,680. So, well, I got a couple of things to say. Now, this may sound bad, but I'm gonna say it anyway. We, we was doing First Friday, and we was doing First Saturday. Now, First Friday, they didn't abide by the rules. They didn't wear the mask like they're supposed to. So now they've stopped First Friday, and because they stopped First Friday, they're saying that we can't have First Saturday. And I, I, I don't agree with that because the last Saturday, when we was down there doing the voter registration and the census, 99.9% of the people there had a mask on. It was one person that didn't have a mask on, and the others are, because he was talking. And so, you know, that's like saying if one kid mess up, we're gonna punish all the kids. It was simple. The K-More explained it, and the mayor explained it, and said if you wear your mask, we continue to have First Friday. You didn't do it, so it's nobody's fault but your own. You can't blame anybody or any other group but yourself because you didn't wear your mask. You may not believe in the COVID, but once it hit home and you catch it, then you'll start believing in it. And I know this because I've got some buddies that didn't believe in it till they caught it. You know, but it doesn't make sense. You should follow the science. I don't understand us right now, I really don't. You know, you're pitting left against right. Even the president said on a tape that it was a, it was a bad, it was very bad, and it was killing people. Then he come right out and he says not publicly. So I don't know, to me, you gotta use common sense. If the doctors and the nurses, when they doing surgery, they wear a mask, what's wrong with us wearing a mask? That's all you got to do, and we can get back to normalcy as soon as possible if you wear the mask. But if you continue to go into where we're going, it's gonna be a long time because people gonna get sick and they gonna die. This thing is killing people. But I understand what the mayor's doing, and he's gonna counsel First Saturday, but that don't mean I have to agree with it. So please, people, continue to wear the mask. If, if you wanna kill yourself, that's fine, but look at the doctors and the nurses that gotta come in there and take care of you, and they may catch it. That's all I'm asking. Please, let's use common sense. Thank you.
Councilman Back?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam President. First Baptist Church will not have food distribution tomorrow. We will hope to have it the next Wednesday, so no food distribution tomorrow at First Baptist Church. I do want to echo the sentiments and the thanks on the budget for 2021. Lisa and Mayor Guyton and Frankie Davis, thank you all for the work that you've put into this. It's, the more I get into these, it's not an easy process, but I mean, at the end of the day, the city exists to protect and serve, and we're in the service business, so we, that means we have people, so we're also in the people business, and I think we've taken care of our people to the best of our ability. It's, it's always easy to do this when you got a bunch of money, but when you have a reduction in money, then, then it, then it's not quite as easy. And I think y'all have done a really good job, and I appreciate your approach and, and how you've created this, this year's budget. I also want to thank you for Twin Bridges, the increased play. I've talked with a lot of people, and they have really enjoyed playing the golf course. I think we'll see that continue. I think we'll see the trend continue that we'll have more rounds, and I think that's gonna help, help our bottom line at Twin Bridges. It's really, if you haven't had a chance to go out there, if you're a golfer, it's really a nice place. Chad does a great job out there. We've, we've got good people. It's just a nice golf course. Also want to recognize, and you, people may have seen this, but our former, one of our former finance directors, Steve Ritchie, passed away at age 69 on September the 9th. I think Steve served as finance director nine or 10 years. He was the current finance director at The Bridge Incorporated, which is adolescent and teen treatment center that has facilities all over the state. He'd been there almost 17 years, and Steve was a good friend, he was a good man, he was a good daddy, and, and he will be missed in our community. And last but not least, on a little bit lighter note, you may notice I put a can of WD-40 up here on, in, in front of my chair. Last week, I, I sat in a squeaky chair, and every time I moved around to get a picture from Chairman Toles, it made a noise. These microphones pick up pretty, pretty good. So as true to my promise on social media, I said I was gonna spray the chair, so I sprayed it, and there's the proof. So WD-40 to the rescue. So thank you, Madam Chairman.
Councilman, will you?
That's funny. So just really quickly, to the, the point about COVID, I think there was an interesting piece of information that was shared over the weekend. The, the source of the data is the Alabama Department of Public Health. Unfortunately, the city of, I mean, the, the, Edgewall County was held in a negative light. We saw the state's largest increase in the seven-day average last week, and so that, that's not a good thing. And if you look at that map, we kind of pop because we're the darkest county, we're, we're the darkest county on that map. You know, that could, that could lend itself to a lot of different things and could call out a lot of different things, but it, it's definitely an opportunity for us to, to, to be more mindful of, of, of the long road ahead that we have with this virus, and we ask that people continue to take it seriously. This is, again, if you're one of those families that's had someone die or get extremely ill as it relates to this, this is not a game. This is not... This is not something to play with. And we just ask that for, for a season, that people be smart and wear masks and let's get through it so, so we can to, get to, get back to some level of normalcy. I do again wanna thank, you know, I don't think people often realize this year, Lisa didn't have some of the support that she's had in the past with that budget. And, and she also didn't have a, a lot of the money that she's had in the past as well. But she, she did a great job in managing through the budget issues. I do appreciate this council for the fact that we didn't over politicize it. We voted the budget in unanimously and, or will hopefully next week, vote the budget in unanimously. And, and again, we appreciate, appreciate all the hard work and commitment on everybody's part. Personnel cost is always a delicate item for us. And I think you heard us speak to it, we, there were no layoffs. We, we absorbed the city one hundred percent when you're, when you're statutorily required to do it at eighty. We absorbed that a hundred percent, which is a testament. So no layoffs, complete absorption of the health insurance, insurance escalation. And, and we overall decreased personnel cost. And I think you've heard me say, time after time, budget after budget, that we, we had gotten way out of balance with those personnel costs. And there's still some opportunity, but, but as it stands right now, we're trending and headed in the right direction as it relates to that. And, and sometimes it takes a, a, an incident or an issue like a global pandemic to highlight those true, truly essential expenses. So, so again, we do appreciate everybody's hard work as it relates to that. The last thing I have is, do wanna highlight something, this has probably been two weeks now. We're two weeks removed from the University of Alabama football team and, and in some of Nick Saban's comments as it relates to the social unrest in the country. I, I can tell you that, you know, I do appreciate the University of Alabama football team's stance and position. And it's, and it's very clear, it can be summed up in a video that they, that they released some time ago. All lives can't matter until black lives matter. And so, so I, I think that is, and, and you can, you can replace black with any color you want in that statement and it still holds true. And I do appreciate, I do appreciate again, the, the stance that those young men have taken. And it's something that I think will help to shape their view of society going forward. Society against racism will continue to be my plea. Thank you, Madam President.
I would just like to continuously to encourage people to, if you haven't registered to vote, register to vote and go out and exercise your right as an American citizen to go out and to, and to vote. Okay, mayor, you wanted to?
I did wanna clarify one thing, on First Friday, first, yeah, nobody is against that. We had a lot of our people working over there, you know, we had the voters registration thing. It was a big crowd there then too. And we have people who clean the restrooms and do a lot of that. And according to the letter I got from Department of Health, not about First Friday, but with big crowds, we just really need to sit tight for a while. And that's all that was.
Can I say one other thing about the census?
Okay.
Got an email on the census, we, Gaston is at sixty percent. At this time, ten years ago, we were at sixty-six percent. So please, if you haven't filled your census out, fill it out, a caller phone number and you can do it over the phone. We have to get you all to do your, fill your census out, please, thank you.
If there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.